Well, welcome everyone to the October eleventh, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Wakefield Board of Appeals. The meeting's being recorded. I'm gonna start by taking a roll call. Uh, Jim McBane.
Here.
Dave Hatfield.
Here.
Chip Tarbell.
Here.
Joe Pride.
Here.
Chris Lumi Humphries.
Yeah.
I will note that both, uh, Greg McIntosh and Mickey Feely will be in the meeting, so they will not be present tonight. So with that, I'm gonna ask Joe to, uh, as the clerk, to, uh, read, um, the legal notice.
Joe, thanks, Tom. Uh, consists with governor's orders, it's extending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to this meeting in real time. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following and down number one, three oh one, seven one five, eight five nine two, meeting ID eight eight six, zero one eight seven four one eight seven Pasco nine zero one zero five, zero five one. Please use, please only use dial in our computer and not both. As audio feedback will distort the meeting, this meeting will be audio and video recorded in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. This location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and or language assistance free of charge upon request. If you are a person with a disability or require information on all materials in an alternate format, or if you require any other accommodation, please contact the town disability coordinator, William Renault, town engineer at seven eight one two four six six three zero eight. As far in advance of the event as possible, every effort will be made to grant your request. The advance notification will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements to remove an accessory barrier for you. One, continued hearings. Two, twenty-four dash nine, Jeffrey Manning, trustee of the Charles E. Nope, Junior Charitable Remender Unit Trust, application for a determination and or finding with respect to a continuation and extension of a nonconforming uses under Article nine, section one ninety fifty B of the Wakefield zoning bylaw, laid to certain changes, extensions for altern- alter- alterations to the parking layout. The property shown as map one A lock parcel zero one eight of the assesses map and is located at ninety Bay State Road, Port of Appeals.
Thank you, Joe. Um, as is our custom, we've had a couple of letters asking for, uh, some continuances on some of the, uh, continued hearings. I'll read those into the record, October eleventh, from attorney Brian McGrail, regarding Mirror LLC and Sky Group Investments LLC, one Audubon Road, Wakefield, Mass., case numbers twenty-three sixty-six, twenty-three sixty-seven, and twenty-three sixty-eight. Dear Mr. Chair, please continue this matter until your meeting on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, and that the client is in the process of changing building designs at the corporate level, which they desire to utilize in Wakefield, and the plans will not be available until that time. The current extension for the board to render and or file a decision is through November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Please let this letter confirm that the applicant has agreed to extend the time for the board to render and or file any decisions until January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Thank you for your consideration. I think a, um, motion to both, uh, continue and, uh, extend our, uh, confirm that we will extend our time, uh, per the applicant uh, agreement until January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
So I move that we, or Dave, you going? Feel free.
Go for it, Chip. I was on mute. I was late.
Okay. I move that we continue the hearing to December thir- our December meeting, December thirteenth, and that we accept the offer to extend the time period to January thirty-first, and it scares me to say twenty twenty-four.
Second hour.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing on regular voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Jim? Jim? Jim, are with us?
I think he's frozen.
Yes.
You're breaking up, that's all.
Okay, and I vote yes. Matters continue to December thirteenth. Next one is, letter date October eleventh, from attorney Brian McGrail, regarding Northeast Warehouse Boston LLC, three Melvin Street, case numbers twenty-three seventy-seven, twenty-three seventy-eight, and twenty-three seventy-nine. Dear Mr. Chair, please continue this matter until your meeting on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, and that we are still in the process of working on items requested by the board, including but not limited to building material options. The current extension for the board to render and or file decisions is through November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Please let this letter confirm that the applicant has agreed to extend the time for the board to render and or file any decision until January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four.
So, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we grant the, um, uh, continuance to our December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three hearing, and accept the applicant's, uh, request to extend, uh, the board's time to render a decision to January twenty-fourth. This is tw- twenty thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing none, uh, regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim? Thumbs up, Jim? Were you frozen? Chip?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Those mags are continued. If you hear to comment on either one of those hearings, please know that they're continued until December. So moving on to the first continued hearing on the agenda is case twenty-three forty-three, twenty-three forty-four, twenty-three forty-five, twenty-three forty-six, twenty-three forty-seven, twenty-three forty-eight, twenty-three forty-nine, twenty-three fifty, Granite Family Trust LLC, located at three fourteen, three thirty, and three thirty-six Salem Street.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Uh, members of the board, for the record, attorney Brian McGrail, representing the applicant, Granite Family Trust LLC, properties three fourteen to three, uh, thirty-six Salem Street. Um, we're back before you again tonight. Um, at the, at the last meeting, uh, it was discussed that we would, um, meet with Mr. Tarbell as a representative of the board, with our, um, architectural team and our, uh, engineering to team, uh, team, um, and, um, also with the town engineer, Mr. Renault, uh, with the goal of, uh, lowering the building, uh, uh, as much as possible, um, and, and to try to bring the height of it down. Um, we thought it would be good to incorporate, uh, Mr. Renault, the town engineer, into our working session meeting, uh, because he has knowledge of the utilities and the impacts, um, as far as it relates to, uh, lowering the floor of the garage and, and, uh, bringing it down as much as possible. Uh, we also had our landscape architect, Jim Emanuel, at that meeting, uh, because Jim, um, once, uh, the level of this building is determined, the landscaping plan is gonna have to be revised and adjusted accordingly. Um, the meeting was, was, I think, very productive. Went on for approximately an hour. Uh, Mr. Tarbell, as usual, asked a lot of good questions and had good input. Um, and, um, you know, I think, uh, certainly Chip can speak for himself, but, uh, the concern was that, uh, the way it's, it currently is designed is the wall out front, uh, along, um, Salem Street i- uh, is somewhat high, and then it grades up towards the building. And, um, and so in, in addition to looking at the reduction or reducing the height by bringing the floor down, uh, the discussion, um, eventually led in this direction. To lower the wall and perhaps reveal more foundation of the building. Uh, cause right now, there's no foundation reveal on the building, and that would allow us to reduce the height of the wall out front, uh, and, uh, and to, uh, reduce the grade from the wall up to the building, instead of having it go up in a slope to have it more, uh, in a flat, um, tra- trajectory. Um, I think it might be helpful, um, to, because, you know, discussions are gonna go on about this, and, and I know Chip is gonna have a lot of comment to the board on this. Um, but I'm gonna bring up the, the, uh, elevations. Um, these are the, these are the latest renderings of the building, and this is, so I thought it might be helpful for the board to see this. Uh, this is coming from the Winfield side, heading towards Wakefield. And this kind of gives you an idea of what I'm talking about, that, uh, this is the wall, you can see it slope up, and there's, is basically no reveal on that foundation. Um, and this kind of shows it even better. And what we discussed is, this is a field stone wall that we wanna, um, can, you know, that we wanna mimic what's going on in the neighborhood. Uh, and that was a, also a discussion, and I, and I, I think it might be, be, uh, a good, uh, uh, time to kind of show you what, uh, the thoughts were on that. So I'm gonna stop sharing this for a minute. You know, one second, just gotta get the right one. Okay. So this is our site, um, as you know, and what we're talking about. Um, this is the, this is the house, which is also part of our site that sits up pretty high as it is, which is, you know, similar to what we're gonna be, and this has the wall in front of it, and our driveway to our, uh, common driveway is pretty much gonna be where this driveway is. So as you can see, the house next door also has this wall. Bring it around. Sorry about that. Make you dizzy. There you go. So this has the wall. And what the thought is, it's probably about three and a half feet high. So that wall will turn into our driveway, and then this side will go into our driveway, and then the wall, which will be of a similar style, which will have a field stone look to it, will carry right in the front of our property. It's just a matter of adjusting the height, um, on, on, you know, what that wall is gonna be with the grade. So, you know, I think that kind of sets the, the table from, uh, uh, with our, with our meeting with Chip, and for you, Mr. Chair, um, if I could ask Mr. Tarbell how he thinks we should proceed. Uh, Chip, do you think John Overt should kind of explain the limitations on the lowering of the building, or how would, what would you suggest?
So, Brian, thank you. Um, I think at this point, John explained it last time. So let me take it from here, and if people have more specific questions, um, they can ask John, but I, I think, so there were a couple things that I was concerned about, that we hadn't, uh, pushed the engineers and architects enough to get this as low as possible. So that was my first challenge, and what, what I was told was presented to us didn't, um, I don't know whether I was hearing it or not, but in that three feet that they claim they can get the building down, or, and I'll use roughly three feet, John had already taken into consideration a foot or foot and a half. So he already took ownership of lowering the garage floor a foot to a foot and a half as part of that three feet. Uh, I did not understand that after the last presentation, and having sat through it, an educational process with himself and John, and with Bill Renault and John, I now understand with culverts and where they have to tie into the street and positive draining on the property and all the drainage issues, that I, I believed them that we, I pushed as hard as I could, and we're, we're, we're with they as low as they can be for many technical reasons. But after a half hour, I, I believe they've looked at all the different options and possibilities. So I'm comfortable with that. Then we talked, and then the other thing that, that we had to remember, or I had to remember, is when you're talking about the elevation from Salem Street to the first floor, you're talking about the top of the first floor or threshold height into the building. That still leaves all the structure below it to be in the garage. So, and I'm gonna talk rough numbers, cause I don't re- totally, uh, remember exactly, but it's roughly from the floor of the, of the, uh, garage up to the underside of the deck sprinkler system, lights, stuff like that is eight feet, roughly two inches, of which is code for getting a, uh, handicapped van in. And also, the way you come into the garage has to be sloped in such a way that the van can drive in and not pinch down a steep grade as well. So, given all that, I think they have done as much as they can do. So then, my trouble was looking at the elevations that Brian just showed us. We had basically a five-foot stone wall. So you're, when you're walking along it, um, you know, if you're a short person, it's up at your head, and even if you're a tall person, it's shoulder height at best. Uh, and felt very claustrophobic to me to be right on the backside of, of the sidewalk, uh, and then Salem Street, and having this five-foot wall with another five feet going up to, uh, you know, ten foot at the first floor elevation. So I then started pushing on, well, how do we make that feel less intrusive? And that's when we started talking about, okay, well, this looked like a bunch of townhomes with some ins and outs. So my thought was, well, why do we need to bring landscaping right up to the, to the cell, right? All these old homes and all these homes along the street are showing foundation. So if we show three to four feet of foundation, and I'm not talking about, uh, cement CMU wall, although that may be the backdrop, the front drop or the facade would be potentially field stone, potentially brick on one of these units, maybe granite block, all of which you can get and apply on your cement. So that, then, if we drop that, three feet, four feet, none of that's been determined, now you can drop the wall in front. So you get to a three and a half foot wall, a two-foot grade, two to three-foot grade of pitch, and then four foot exposed, like you would on many, many homes, and different foundations for each different townhouse, giving it some character, some charm. Uh, and then where the porches are, you know, you can put your lattice work and with plantings, you could really make them look like individual homes. And to me, that was helpful for not making it feel like we were climbing this mountain up to the first floor. And so for not technical, that's kind of where we came around. Um, and I think if they design something for the front, we'll find that it really helps with the character of the neighborhood, cause if you look at the picture Brian showed you, and he's got one on, that isn't from Google Earth, but is more of a picture. You can see the house they're taking down, has a stone wall already in front of it, and the neighbor's house has a stone wall. So, and the, and the entrance into their property basically is where that driveway is. So you can picture this three and a half, three and a half foot stone wall on either side of a driveway coming into the property. It'll be nice if they, you know, so choose to do a couple pillars, a couple lights, whatever, might be really nice. Then you come along, you've got some stairs, but again, it's all down. It's not this big slope. So that's where we ended up, and I, I think it will work. Correct me if I stated anything incorrectly, John.
No. This is the, uh, Chip, I'm putting up that house that you talked about.
Yeah. There it is, right there. Now that's coming down, but that's what we're kind of talking about.
The one on the bottom's coming down. Yeah, right here.
Yeah.
This one stays. This will be our neighbor. The one on the top stays, and one on the bottom comes down.
So I think that gives us some good opportunities. And Bill was, you know, Bill Renault says that he and John can work on the details as far as sidewalk, whether there are any street trees, whether the trees go up on top of the, the, uh, stone wall, whatever, but I, I think if you think about how that's, if you're driving down Salem Street, coming around the corner, uh, it struck me that that stone wall is already there. Now it's just gonna continue along and fill in where Wildflowers is. And, and quite frankly, I think it will really carry along that sidewalk very nicely, um, around the corner. Uh, and will help visually, will help with the road scheme, all of that. I think it works, in my humble opinion.
Okay, Brian, can you stop sharing? I see, uh, Dave has his hand up.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, um, thanks for the information, Brian, and, and Chip, for your additional commentary. It sounds like it was a productive meeting. Um, and I, just going in order, I, I agree with the approach, and I would like to see, um, the updates that the applicant comes up with, um, on tearing this, the front. Um, and that sounds like a good approach. Um, maybe I misunderstood the presentation before as well, but, and maybe we just need to see new, new elevations with heights, but I thought, a- and again, unless I'm confusing with another application, that they talked about lowering each story one foot from like nine-foot ceilings to eight-foot ceilings or something, to get the three feet on the actual height of the building. Regardless of the garage depth, I thought I heard that, unless I'm mixing up my projects.
So it was six inches per floor, and the garage had to stay, has to stay about the same. So it was about a foot and a half in the building, and about a foot and a half lowering the actual building, the whole building.
Okay, so I maybe didn't totally get it either, but okay, so would like to see updated, um, you know, elevations with the, with the heights. Um, so what would be the proposed height from grade? Do I can help that? Do we know? Yeah, I think John can, um.
I don't. Think I ever really, it, it would basically be if, about three feet lower than we had before, which I think the average grade was, before was around.
Forty-two, John, forty-two and change.
Forty-two, so it'd be about thirty-nine.
It was forty-two point seven. Okay.
So Brian, will you be able to reproduce what Dave has requested?
Oh, yeah, we play it, we plan on that. Um, we just, you know, I, if, if this is, if the board, you know, we, we're kind of looking for direction from the board, Mr. Chair, because I think I stated at the last meeting, we want to make sure we have a kind of a path forward to get this done and approved, because, um, my clients are happy to do the redesign with the architect in the, in the engineering. It's just gonna be, um, you know, more money for them to do that, which they're fine with. I mean, but they, you know, and I know you need to see it, but we just want to make sure it's a direction that, that the board wants us to go before we, we endeavor in that, uh, task.
Oh, okay, thank you. Uh, Jim, I see your hand up.
Yeah, um, I'm fine with this. It, it sort of meets with the changes we made on the building exterior as well, but now sets it into a better surrounding than it was before, and reduces some of the mitigation that was concerning. And we have reduced the size of this thing on the site as, as indicated here at the same time, and proportionally set it, um, with respect to the neighborhood. So I'm, personally, I'm fine with the, the direction this has taken.
Great. Thank you, Joe. See you again.
Thanks. Um, Brian, are you asking for relief on the height, or are we? Are we there? I, I think, was it, I, I know.
We're gonna be close, because.
Is it thirty-five feet in the residential?
Uh, well, the, it, this is in the.
This is commercial. This is commercial, so we're.
So it would be sixty, but it's gonna be classified as a garden apartment in the multifamily, which has a height requirement of thirty-five, Joe. So we're maybe just over that, I think, at the end of the day.
Uh, yeah.
And by the way, thirty-five, and you know, this is in the business, but thirty-five is the, is the height in the residential district as well.
Understood. So you're, you're gonna be up all three feet, back to that three-foot number you have. Um, yeah, but I, as like other board members stated, I'm, I'm okay with this.
Yeah, I, I would agree as well. Uh, I agree with exactly what, uh, Jim, Joe, and, uh, Dave said. Appreciate your work, Chip. Um, would like to see the new thing, and I, I do think that landscaping will be important as well, so at some point when you're ready to, to present that, um. But tonight's renderings are the best I've seen this project to date, so, um, I appreciate all the, the willingness of the applicant to work, and Chip's work with them, as well as Jim's work on the architecture. So I think it's going in the right direction.
Yep, thank you. And yeah, Jim Emanuel's gonna be involved with this, because he's gonna, um, kind of redesign the landscaping in the front of the building based on the topography. So with, with the, the board's, uh, blessing, we'd like to move forward and, and hopefully have something for you at the next meeting. And, uh, to keep, uh, Mr. McBane, uh, in the hook here, because, uh, there's gonna be some architectural changes on the front of the building as far as, uh, material and stuff like that. So we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, include him at, uh, during that two-week process, if that's okay, Mr. Chair.
I think that's right. Um, I think, uh, as you heard, this is going in the right direction, so please do take the next step with Jim. Is there anything else that you had to present tonight, Brian?
No, I just wanted, um, make you aware that, uh, the extension is only in place until the thirty-first of this month, so before you close the hearing, we will need to extend it further.
Okay, that sounds right. All right, with that, any more questions or comments from the board? Hearing and seeing none, I will open it up to the public at this point. If you're a member of the public and would like to comment on this case, please use the raise hand function in Zoom. I see Albert and Jane DiMario, uh, with the hand raised, so who's, whether it's Albert or Jane, please, uh, feel free to start testifying.
Hi, it's Jane. I'm sorry, I don't have the video going. Um, I'm really happy with how things are proceeding. Uh, I've seen a lot of improvements in the, in the, uh, planning as you've gone along, and as Chip said, charming, I'm beyond thrilled to think that there's gonna be something charming over there. Uh, my husband agrees with everything. Thank you.
Thank you for coming and testifying. Anybody else? Hearing and seeing none, back to the board.
Uh, Brian, is there a date that you're requesting to, um, extend the? I would say just, uh, whatever the board's pleasure. I mean, it, you know, whatever the board's comfortable with, because I know it's really just a placeholder, because I know you go as fast as you can anyway, so perhaps the end of November. Or the end of December, is that too far? Or maybe that, cause we have one meeting in November, one in December. Our goal is to have this closed out by December. That's our, that's our personal goal. Don't, you know, hopefully we can make that, so. Uh, I would, I would suggest twelve thirty-one, and that gives us a few more hearings to wrap it up potentially, and and render the decision. That's fine. Yeah, all right. So, Mr. Chair, I would make motion to continue this hearing to the October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three meeting, and accept the applicant's request to extend the time for the board to render a decision to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Seconded.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, uh, regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So continue to the twenty-fifth with the extension to the thirty-first.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you for all the work on this. All right, that, uh, that completes our continued case. Alright, that, uh, that completes our continued cases. We're now on to new hearings.
What point of order, Mr. Chair? Do we not have Main Street?
Oh, I missed that one, sorry. Good catch.
Brian would have, Brian would have said something if I didn't.
I was getting a little optimistic there in terms of our time. Okay, next up, we'll continue hearing twenty-three seventy, twenty-three seventy-one, twenty-three seventy-two. A and E Realty Trust located at four sixty, four sixty-six and four seventy-two Main Street.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the record. Attorney Brian McGreal here for the applicant A and E Realty Trust, four sixty to four seventy-two Main Street. Uh, the team from Phoenix Architects is here with me tonight, Peter Santos and Steve DeFuria. Um, similar to this, uh, the, the last project, uh, subsequent to the last meeting with this project. Uh, we, we had a very substantive meeting, uh, including on behalf of the board, uh, Jim McBane. Uh, and the town engineer, uh, Bill Renault, and with the goal of, of taking a look at how this project ties into Envision. Because we want to move the site civil aspect of this project forward. We had our site civil engineer, Rick Salvo from Engineering Alliance there as well. Um, and, um, the meeting, uh, went well. What we learned is that, uh, with the stage. Uh, that Envision is at at this point for downtown, this project is going to come well before that will be implemented. Uh, and I'm glad Jim was at, in the, in that meeting with us with the town engineer. And basically what we learned is. Uh, the town engineer has said, you're going to have to move forward with this project and then Envision will get built around you. There's no way for you to do your Envision work in front of this property. Um, prior to the whole Envision being done, which is probably not going to be till sometime in two thousand twenty-five or twenty-six. Um, so what, what the town is going to look for is a contribution from my client. Uh, because, uh, that will be incorporated into the work that will go on our front, which we're fine with. We'll work that out with the town engineer. Um, so, so it, it kind of makes our site civil aspect of this a little bit simpler. Um, and, and so, uh, our site civil engineer now is finalizing his plans. We expect to have those submitted in time for presentation and discussion at your meeting on the twenty-fifth. Um, I also submitted to you the traffic advisory committee memo, um, last Friday, which you have. Um, and I kind of highlighted the issues that were brought up by the TAC. Uh, one of which is the, uh, is the prevention of the left-hand turn coming from, um, downtown. Um, and preventing a left-hand turn into the building and some board members had some questions on that. Um, or concerns or, um, really didn't fully understand it, so. Um, I took the liberty, uh, Mr. Chair, to ask Mr. Renault to, um, put a placeholder in his schedule. That, um, he could appear before the, uh, zoning board at the next meeting on the twenty-fifth. Is, uh, the vice chair of the TAC to discuss that with the, with your board. Um, so I told him I would present that to the board tonight, and if the board wanted him here, I would convey that to him that he would be at that meeting on the twenty-fifth.
I agree, I heard, you know, several board members had questions, so I think it's a good idea to hear from him.
Okay, then I will, I will let him know that, uh, to please attend and, and I'm sure he will as he committed to that today. Um, so that's where we are with Site Civil and kind of TAC stuff and, and, and Jim McBane in the meeting with us last week. Um, we agreed that our goal tonight would be to somewhat or totally finalize the architectural aspect of this, uh, building. To kind of get that done. Um, so we had some discussions with Mr. McBane on some things that needed to be done. Um, and, uh, Steve, uh, from Phoenix has worked on that. Um, and, um, we'd like to present that to you and then we also kind of want to go over the color options one more time. We did that early on and we kind of want to, you know, kind of try to, try to get a feel for the board on where you are on the color possibilities. Uh, the palette for the property. So with that said, if I may, I'd like to hand it over to Steve and he can go through the, um, revised architectures, which, uh, hopefully will be the finals at this point.
Yeah, unless, Jim, Steven, if you get a hold for a second, Jim, unless you want to make a comment first, did you want him, want to wait till it, him present?
No, I'll, I'll, I'll sit tight here.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead, Steven.
Thank you. For the record, Steve DeFuria representing, um, Phoenix Architects. Um, so just jump through the building quickly again. I, I know we've kind of gone over this before, that just bring everybody back up to speed. Um, throughout the building, we still have unit count still the same, so we still have sixteen units total. Um, still have six retail spaces down on the ground floor, parking in the back of the building. Um, courtyard still exists kind of in the U shape, um, at the back entrance here. Um, and we'll get into materials at the end, um, of, of what we're thinking back here. Um, then up, up on the second floor. Move this real quick. Um, sixteen units up on the second floor level. Um, we still have the four townhouse units in the back left corner here that go up to the third floor. Um, again, unit breakdown still the same, two one-bed studios, ten one-bed, um, four two bedrooms. Um, and then just panning through quickly. And then I know in the last meeting, there was discussion about, um, the contrast of highlighting the detail sort of in the front of the building. Proximity towards Main Street. Um, and then what does that start to do towards the back of the building? Um, how close is that parking garage actually to our site? Um, and we ended up finding out in the back of the building that the, the parking garage in the rear property is actually right up against our site. Um, so we ended up keeping the detail the same as we had prior, kind of, um. Highlighting the, the detail on the front, kind of scaling back in the back of the building. It's actually similar to what's there in the building now. Um, a lot of the detail exists in the front and then you have that cinder block structure in the back. So again, kind of carrying some of the existing into our proposed plan. Um. And then again, looking through these renderings still, still exactly the same, so kind of analyzing the existing streetscape. What our building starts to look like in, in the different views from each side of Main Street. Um, details, I know we, we walked through in the last meeting, um, looking at the front window detail. Again, having a classic crosshead detail, having historic sill, um, and then starting to cap that detail as you go toward the back of the building. Um, looking at the arch windows, carrying that detail with, with the keystone, um, similar to what we're doing in the front. Um, and then again, looking at these banding details, all, all of that still is the same. Um, I, I think our main focus was just on materials. Um, we ended up bringing a, a box of materials down to the building apartment actually this morning. The only product that's missing is the, the bracket up in the cornice, the larger bracket. Um, the crosshead details there, the, the smaller bracket that exists under the, the retail banding is there. Um, and then the, the hardy plank khaki brown lap siding that exists on the, the upper level in the residential area, there's a sample there. Um, and then the iron gray smooth siding is there as well, um, for you guys to take a look at. Then the only materials that we updated and added was the, the courtyard in the back, starting to pick a brick paver. We went with like a Boston Colonial brick paver, um, something that kind of goes with the age of the building. Going with a black steel planter box back there. Um, and then actually, we, we ended up switching the lantern. Um, that exists on the front of the building, the accent lighting, just starting to get a, a dark sky compliant light there. Um, I think we had an all-glass lantern last time, so this will help dilute the light pollution a little bit. Um, dental molding details are, uh, samples in the box as well for everybody to take a look at. Um, but other than that, that, that's about it. I know. Brian had mentioned, we, we had looked at, I think at one point, a, a brick facade. Um, I think the board had kind of a mixed emotion and I think everybody was starting to lean towards the. Um, the khaki brown hardy plank, something different there. I know a lot of the surrounding buildings is more of the browns and tans. Um, but happy to bring that graphic up to discuss if the board would like.
Steve, I think, I think the board, you know, it was at one point like a greenish, um, option. I think the board decided on the hardy plank, but it was more the colors and, and I think, I think you're right on the khaki, but I just wanted to provide the board an opportunity to take one more look at that different color option.
Yeah, I, I can pull up, um, I'll pull up those graphics that we can take a look at quick.
In, in the building that you're going to show with the colors has changed a little bit from when you showed them, but at least it will give the kind of the color look of.
Yeah, so at, at one point, I know we had looked at, again, going the, the dark smooth siding down low at the, the retail area. Going brick up top, um, still keeping the, the dark painted trim at the cornice with the light bracket. Um, the other option we looked at was actually, um, it's actually an iron gray. Um, so it's, it's similar to the smooth siding down below. Um, but it has a little bit of a green tint to it and then the gray banding kind of breaks the residential and the retail. Um, and then the last one was kind of playing with the gray there. I know it, it goes a little bit outside what the, the surrounding buildings are. But just exploring some different options there.
Can you go back to the khaki brown, Steve?
Yep.
Right, thank you.
Okay, Brian, is that it?
Yeah, that, that's it. Um, and I know, you know, I had said we want to, you know, close out architecture. I know you need to look at the materials. You've got, we've got time, I'm all looking for like a solid, like, oh, yeah, this is, this is a hundred percent it, but we just kind of. If there's any major things you want to change, it's, now will be kind of the time to talk about that.
Okay. Steve, if you could just stop sharing for a minute so I can see the board and I might ask you to pull some things back up or board member might ask. I appreciate that.
Sure, not a problem.
Thank you. Cause to me, I, I see your hand raised.
Yes, I, um, I like the colors, uh, materials, but I have a question on, uh. The, uh, the apartment on the second floor on the backside, very close to the parking lot. Do you have like the height, height of the apartment window and then the height of the parking lot? It's like, if you're in an apartment, are you going to be looking down towards the parking lot? Or if somebody's on the parking lot, they can look into your apartment? Do you know what the height difference is?
Yeah, so I know, I don't know the heights offhand. I know windows off the floor are about four feet. We actually shrunk the window height there just to give some privacy. Um, I don't know offhand what the height above the garage is. Um, but I know that first floor back there, you're basically at level with the parking garage and then you're another story up from there. Um, but offhand, I don't know what that measurement is.
Is there, is there some, um, is that something you can find out? Cause like, if I live in the apartment and have somebody going in the parking lot, I don't think I feel comfortable. Like, I'll be like shutting the windows, like curtains all the time, which is not really what you want to do if you have a window.
Yep, no, absolutely. We can get that information for you.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, uh, Kasumi, are you done with that?
Yes, I'm done.
Uh, Steve, can you pull up that bracket? You say you don't have a sample of yet.
Yep. So it's this, this one here.
Yeah, so, so let me point something out. Uh, pigeons love to live in those areas. So I'd find something that isn't open like that. It might be, have a web in there, something that would stop pigeons from. Or even sparrows basically for living in there. Um, cause that's, that, that's the sort of places they look for in a, in a city and town, basically. They're lazy and they like someone to provide them with a roost.
Yeah, not a problem. I know they have, I know we were going on the larger side. I, I think the projection of that's like twenty inches and then. Height-wise, I think we're about two feet. Um, I know like Five Pond Architectural Elements has a ton of profiles there that are solid. So we can definitely look into that. Appreciate it.
You know, I don't mind, I, I don't mind the cutout. It's just, let's not provide them with too much cutout, you know?
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Whether there's a web in there that basically, that's part of that or whether it's just something else. And I think you ought to look around for something that we don't provide the opportunity to.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, Steve, you can stop sharing again. Chip, did you want to say something?
Nope, I'm good.
Anybody else?
Good as well. I'm glad you brought up the other options just again to refresh our memory, but I'm still comfortable with the one we, we chose, so. Colors and the, the details and architectural, I think it's where it needs to be. Looks good.
I, I agree. Uh, Brian, I, I had a couple of notes about the structural assessment. Do you guys know what you're doing? It's going to be the full or partial demo?
Right now, we want it to be partial. That's, that's, that's where we're leaning. The fire, the fire, it was a difficult fire for the fire department, as you know, it's stubborn. Um, my understanding was in a crawl space, so it was really, you know, challenging for them. Uh, but, uh, according to my client's contractor, thankfully, not a lot of structural damage.
And there was a question about the garage door as well. Did you discuss that with Jim at all?
That, we, we are going to have a garage door. Yeah, right, Steve? That was my understanding.
Yeah, so, uh, garage door and it's going to be solid.
Yeah.
Okay, can we get some detail on that too?
Yep.
Yep, not a problem.
Yes.
And then, Brian, I, I assume we're going to do similar to what we did, uh, at the old Y. With some sort of sound or something with cars coming across that sidewalk.
Um. Yeah, and I think, yeah, you're right. And I think you did it on the lot and building too, Chip.
We did.
Yeah.
Now that was the garage door opening up right on. Both of them had garage doors opening up.
Yeah.
But I think we're going to need to do something that picks up the car coming out of that roadway. So that pedestrians will, will know it.
Yeah, uh, perhaps we can have a discussion with the town engineer, Mr. Renault on that when he's, when he's here at the next meeting. It's a, it's a point well taken.
Okay, and, and do you know, are these rentals or condos, Brian?
The plan is for them to be rentals.
Okay, because I have a note too that we, we, uh, now that we've said a little bit, uh, not that there's precedent on every one, every case is unique. But they're not, we're not going to want to see any on-street parking from people that live here.
Yes. Yeah, I think that's even mentioned in the TAC memo I sent you, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
As well as trying to find more parking spaces somehow or reduce the unit count. I think that was in their memo as well. I know it was in their memo.
You'll strangle your first floor business if you don't provide them parking.
I don't have the one and a half, Jim. They're short a couple of spaces. Again, if they're short and. There's a demand within the units, guess where they're going to park?
The Galvin.
Wherever, but it's not where it should be. Don't give them any ideas.
Alright, so when Bill comes in, Brian, if you could be prepared to talk about the parking as well.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing seeing none, I'm going to open it up to public comment. If there's a member of the public here that would like to speak on the matter, please use the raise hand function in Zoom. Reason to keep track of tonight, uh, I don't see anybody. So with that, I'm closing it to public comment. Pleasure of the board.
Brian, where are we extended on this one?
Uh, this one doesn't need it because it's all special permits.
Oh, it's all special, so we're covered there, okay. Alright, two weeks, Brian?
Yes.
Alright. Mr. Chair, I move that we continue this matter to our October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Any discussion? Hearing none, regular voting numbers, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
And I vote yes, continue to the twenty-fifth. And so Brian, you have that. We want to see Bill. We want to talk about parking. Relationship between the height of the garage and the second floor window.
Yep, sidewalk, yep, and yep. Yep, in parking.
Yep.
I do, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Now I think we're done with. Now I think we're done with continued hearings and ready to move on to new hearings. New hearing is, uh, just one tonight, case twenty four dash nine Jeffrey Manning trustee of the Charles Enoch Junior charitable remainder on unit trust ninety Bay State Road. Is anyone here for that?
I am, Mr. Chair, uh, for the record, attorney Brian McGrail. Uh, on behalf of the applicant, um, and, uh, with me tonight is Jeff Manning, um, on behalf of the applicant, and Jeff is the trustee, as you just read in the public notice. Uh, and John Oren is here as well. Um, this is a pretty straightforward finding request. Um, we're not requesting any physical changes to the property. Um, there's nothing being done. What we're simply looking to do here is to document uh, the on the ground parking facilities that have been in place for decades and have been in use with the property. Uh, with the records of the zoning board. So basically looking to kind of put in sync what's happening, what been, what is has happened on the ground for quite some time uh, in sync with the town records. Um, the, the use of the property, uh, at ninety Bay State Road is Liberty Chevrolet uh, in power products. So there's two thriving businesses in the town of Wakefield at this site. Um, they split the building and they should, they split the parking lot, basically. Um, Liberty Chevrolet does obviously auto sales and leasing and, and auto repairs. And Power Products does heavy equipment repair, diesel motors, a very successful company. Um, the, the not family, uh, who Jeff is a representative of has, has owned those businesses for years. And now the power products, uh, business has been sold. Uh, but they're still at the property operating just as they obvious, I always have. It's our anticipation that, um, we will, um, at some point probably condominiumize this property. Um, and so it's important to, to kind of, as I said, just document what's happening on the ground. Um, to what the records are to make sure that when and if we do condominiumize it uh, because of the, uh, split of the businesses that, uh, it will all be in sync, um, with all of the records, uh, with the property. It's important to note, uh, I'll bring up the, the, what we're calling our new kind of site plan. And this is exactly what, what is existing on the ground and how the property operates. Um, we, um, the power products, if you, if you can follow my cursor, if you're facing the property from Bay State Road, they're on the left-hand side of the building. We've kind of demarcated, uh, the line between the two businesses. And Liberty Chevrolet is on the right side. Um, Liberty Chevrolet's majority of their parking is on this side, and Power Products is on this side. A lot of the power products, um, um, vehicles they work on are buses. Uh, and you know, uh, vehicles of that sort, that's why they have and utilize these, you know, what we're calling tandem spaces, which sometimes accommodate vehicles or cars, or sometimes the buses. Um, it works very well. Uh, this property is never overparked. Um, there's, there's now more than enough room. Uh, as Jeff has explained to me, Jeff Manning, who's been, you know, operating Liberty Chevrolet for quite some time. Um, the car business has changed dramatically. Uh, prior to COVID, it was all about inventory. Uh, having cars on the lot to sell new vehicles. Now it's all about, it's not about inventory. It's about order. You know, when you need it. So it's drastically changed on the number of new vehicles that they, that they put on the site. They always had plenty of room. Now they have excess room. Um, we provided a parking calculation chart. Um, which John Oren has done, and he's broken up, uh, both properties up the top. You can see Liberty Chevrolet. And the required, including our sales under our license, um, is ninety nine spaces. And we have a hundred and sixty nine. And on Power Products, the total required is ninety. And including the tandems, we have a total of one oh nine. So plenty of handicap parking. Uh, it all works well. Again, this is really not to change anything. What you're looking at on this plan is what exists on the site today and the way it operates today. Again, we just want to bring these plans in sync. Uh, because this is, this property's been before your board a few different times that dealt with additions to this building. Uh, in two thousand twelve, there was a, if you can follow my curse, there was an addition put on just about here. And then in two thousand eighteen, there was another addition here. But the parking was never addressed. It was just like, it was an old parking plan going back decades that had po- had parking spaces everywhere that just weren't even utilized. Uh, and this really kind of cleans everything up. Um, so I'm gonna, and I can actually show you, um, let me share that screen. Show you how the plant, how the site plan is reflected today of record. Yeah, that was exactly my thought, Brian, and perhaps others. We know you've been before us. Yeah, but you want to see that. Surprised to hear that things got out of sync or that they weren't properly reflecting reality because we made findings or determinations. Well, changes and I'm surprised that things aren't recorded or into town the way they should be. Well, this was, this was basically when these things were done, they were just finding, you know, don't forget, this isn't site plan approval. This is just, this is just, this is a legal non-conforming use on the site. Uh, because, um, these uses are in, uh, they, they, they have been there for quite some time. And they did not require, currently they require special permits, but their grandfather, they don't require, require it. So this just had hundreds of spaces just everywhere that were never utilized. Yeah. So this is, you know, this is reflected. And when the board, when the board, when this was before the board, this is the final addition went on. You know, parking just wasn't addressed. You could park like this, but it, it, you just don't do it because it doesn't work with the site. Now what we're presenting works with the site. And works with the uses that are taking place in the property. Okay, thank you. That helps. I'm trying to rotate this, but I can't, but I think you get the gist. Oh, yeah, all the additional rows we probably just didn't focus on. It wasn't the focus of those hearing. Yeah, it wasn't the focus. Uh, and it was a, it was a minor addition. I mean, it was pretty small. So it was really a focus on the use on the addition, expanding it. And you knew there was plenty of parking there. Um, it, it's just, it, it just wasn't utilized in that fashion. So, um, so, uh, they're very comfortable that this plan, um, it present, works very well with the site because it's actually what's occurring today. And it striped as shown on the plan that you presented. Most of them are, some of them aren't. Uh, let me bring it back up. Because it's not practical to do it. Um, hang on a second. Would that load?
No.
No, okay. Sorry about that. Let me try it again. There you go. So these are all, yeah, so, so these, these, these are all lined up front, which is important because that's where, you know, customers and stuff park. These are, these are spaces that aren't because there are a lot of times where vehicles are stored for sale. And, you know, Liberty Chevrolet, and these aren't lined in the back because these are we're showing you the spaces that can be accommodated. John has sized them because they fit, they fit the types of vehicles that are associated with power products. The buses and large vehicles that they work on. Okay, but you've clarified not lined for those. Okay. We have, yeah, we didn't want to misrepresent that. Correct. And he's outlined either. John, go ahead, please.
Yeah, anything that's not out there, um, is labeled not, is not on the, in the field. Um, some of it is, I guess lined, but it's very faint. So I just called that out as not lined. Um, and then there was a couple of places out front with the handicap spaces. Um, it would need to be some restriping. Everything else, all the other spaces that are shown, if it doesn't say not lined, are out, out on the, out on the ground.
These really outlined because they're not used for parking. They're really used for vehicle storage. And that's why the site has plenty of, uh, room to accommodate is it has historically that there's never a problem out there. Okay, I'm comfortable, Mr. Chair. Are there other questions?
Okay. Any other comments or questions from board members? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna open it up to the public. Is there any member of the public here that would like to comment on this? If so, please use the raise hand function on Zoom. Hearing and seeing none, back to the board.
This is a one ninety fifty B, Brian? Yes. All right, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we grant a finding and determination pursuant to section one ninety fifty B of the bylaw that the proposed, uh, changes and alterations at a property um, at ninety Bay State Road, as shown on the plans, um, from Hayes Engineering dated August twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconformities to the neighborhood.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. That's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that, uh, that is the only new hearing we had for tonight. Next up is other matters. Uh, case twenty dash four, twenty dash five, twenty dash six, two fifty nine Water Street. Discussion of occupancy and landscape.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm here, uh, attorney Brian McGrail, on behalf of, uh, two fifty nine Water Street. Uh, Anthony Akari is here, who's the principal of the entity. Um, this property is, uh, the board knows is across from S and M Liquors, uh, multi-family. And, um, we're trying to close this out on occupancy. It's been on a temporary occupancy permit uh, because of landscaping and, uh, Mr. McBane and Mr. Tabell uh, inspected the property. There were some issues with landscaping, um, that my understanding is that, um, there were some, uh, abrevieties that, um, were dead, that needed to be replaced. Uh, and then there were some trees that were planted. And I need to get a clarification from this from, uh, Jim and Chip, how many of them? But there were two, uh, to two and a half caliber trees when three to three and a half caliber trees were called out on the landscaping plan. Um, so what, what's happened is, uh, since they had the site visit, um, we've been working, my client and I have been working with Mr. Tabell uh, in an effort to get this, um, rectified. Um, and Mr. Tabell has been kind enough to refer us to a number of nurseries where at this time of year, we can find those plants because my clients are ready, willing and able uh, to make the changes and to, uh, deal with the issues. It's a matter of getting the plans. I'm glad to say that uh, Chip referred him to Weston Nurseries and he was able to find the abrevieties that need to be replaced and those are going to be delivered, I think, Anthony on Saturday, right? So I'm pretty sure. You can shake your hand.
On Friday.
Oh, they're coming on Friday. So.
And they'll be planted next week with the landscaper.
Okay, and then on the, on the trees, we thought we found the three and a half inch caliper, um, at Weston Nurseries. And so Anthony, when he went to buy the abrevieties out there, uh, asked to order the caliper, uh, three and a half inch caliper trees. Uh, but when they went to pull them from inventory, they didn't have them. So I, I think those are gonna have, he's happy to make the change. It's just gonna, we, we not gonna be able to do that until the spring because he's looked everywhere and can't find them at this time of year. Um, so, you know, with that said, um, Chip or Jim, you know, can you maybe clarify how many trees there are that need to be dealt with?
It's, it's all the trees that were on the plant.
Okay.
It's the major deciduous trees that were, I don't know whether it's five or six, but all the trees were spec for three inch and all the trees were planted at two and two and a half. And one is even dead at this point.
Okay, so what I'm gonna do, um,
And, and they're not, then all of, then not all the same type of tree either.
No, I'm gonna, I, I actually have the landscaping plan. I'm gonna bring it up.
Yeah, haven't gone.
Just so we're clear, there are a bunch of smaller plants that were dead as well.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say that I've gone by there a, a lot just in my course of business, the landscaping. It's like there's a lot of dead things that are, even on a small scale, Chip took my comment right away that it doesn't look. No, I'm glad you brought it up. You walk it. I just see it driving by. I know Greg's not here, but he mentioned it too, you know, as the, you pull into, uh, Arnold Field there. You know, he's been looking at it as well and mentioned it.
Okay, so I'm gonna table that if I can and, 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 um, not ignoring it, but I just kind of wanted to focus on the trees. So, so I'm seeing that if I read this right, like the HO is a three to three and a half, so there's five of those. So Chip, you're thinking that all five need to be replaced?
Yes.
Okay, just so I know. And then this, um, it was another one, I think it's, uh,
Alberta spruce, I think, Brian.
Yeah, well, there's one, there's one conica that was three to three and, three to three, uh, five. So one of those. Am I missing one, Mr. Chair?
You're on the shrubs now. The trees are the top, uh, top ones.
The top.
Shrubs I, I ordered, that'll be there Friday.
All right, yeah, thank God I got you. All right, so.
The top forward lines, yeah, Brian.
Yeah. All right, so there's, so all the trees need to be done at the top here?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Do you understand that?
Eight in total.
Seven in total?
Eight.
Eight.
I call, I count eight, but.
Eight, you're right. Okay. So Anthony, do you understand that? I want to make sure you're on the same page.
Yep, so, I mean, I thought they said it was just the ones on Water Street, so I was just looking.
No, every, every single tree is too small.
Okay, so.
Every single tree went in at two, to two and a half. Every single tree is supposed to be three inch.
Okay, I didn't have them at the time, so that's why they put that and I look for the other three species and see if they have those currently.
Yeah, sure. I, I think you're probably better off just waiting till the spring. Tough to find them this time of year in this size.
Okay.
Okay.
But all the other.
But you need to go around the whole property, Anthony, and there's a bunch of dead stuff in all your beds.
Yeah, we replaced most of them and we just got the holly because they didn't have that. And there's one rhododendron.
All right, okay.
We're definitely on all that. That's all gonna be done in the next week.
Great.
The tree issue.
Yeah.
And is it all irrigated? So it shouldn't be dying or were they just not coming in healthier?
No, it was all irrigated when we put the plants. Well, yeah, we irrigated like two weeks after we put the plants in, so some didn't take. But some are thriving, so I don't know.
You're gonna replace them, Anthony?
What's that?
You're gonna replace the dead ones.
Yeah, yeah, they're just about all replaced. I mean, we, I ordered them, so they'll be there Friday and then those evergreens will be replaced next week when the landscaper comes. And the small stuff, we replaced most of them. I think we have two left to replace. Um, yep.
But it, it, it sounds like we're going back in the spring anyway, so we're gonna on the final inspection, make, make sure that everything is all right.
Yeah. So what, what I would, what I would like to, you know, i- i- if it's, if, if the board amenable to what, what I, you know, in speaking to Gail, um, and Ben, the building inspector, they run temporary occupancy. We'd like to, you know, we'd like to get a final occupancy before we go into the winter. So what, what I would, would respectfully suggest is, is that my client uh, provide a letter to the board acknowledging these deficiencies in landscaping. Uh, acknowledging, uh, his responsibility to make sure once the spring comes and you can determine, you know, if it, you know, when that inspection would be, that all the landscaping on the plant schedule will be, you know, installed by spec and alive and thriving. Um, and he's committed to do that by a certain date. Um, and acknowledging to the board, uh, that the board has enforcement provisions under the special permit. Uh, as does the building inspector for non-compliance. And acknowledging if there were not in compliance and the board has to seek enforcement, that my client will be responsible for the cost of the town and seeking that enforcement, including costs of town council, uh, in his involvement. Um, but, um,
All right, couple things. All right, couple things, Brian. First, before I, I say something, Jim, you have your hand up. Were you looking to comment?
Yeah, I'm wondering, in, in normal circumstance, when a project finishes in off-season. Is a certain amount of money would be set aside to make sure something like this happens. Normally in that case, the, the items have not been installed, so we hold money, one. Two, I think if in fact, these plants were bought by these documents. Then his sub. Contractor owes him this material because he gave them the wrong material, basically. Besides just all this paperwork. Maybe we should be setting some money aside to make sure that it does happen. Like we would have normally in any other project.
That, that, that's exactly where I was going, Jim. We usually have them post bond for some surety. Brian, were you trying to avoid that? Was that where you're?
Yeah, I'm, we're, we're happy to do that. It's just, you know, it's a, town council's never crazy about that. I, I don't think, I don't think our town is, is set up for that. And, but we're not avoiding it. If that's what the board wants to do, we can certainly, you know, talk to Tom about that. Tom Owen, but.
Can you stop sharing, Brian, so I can see the board?
Yes.
How do folks feel about that?
Tom, we've always. We've always done that when the project hasn't been completed. In all honesty, this is the first time that something's been planted that wasn't spec that I can remember. So we've never run into this before. I, I was kinda thinking we'd just keep them on temporary occupancy until it got settled. But I respect Gail and Benny to not want to do that, so I would wanna come up with some sort of a surety. And we do have, you know, where it is a special permit. We do have the ability to come back for failure to comply. Cause you know, they also, let's just, let's just say everything was planted at the same, as being good. There's also a commitment and condition that everything stays good, right? So, so we, we have enforcement. Rules within the special permit, so I'm kind of okay. Cause I don't think, I know we've run into the problem of, of putting money aside or some sort of bond. Or all of that, that it's just a lot of paperwork. And I don't know that the town's set up to handle that. Plus then it comes back to who then does go in and plant it if it doesn't get done and all those type of things. So I'm okay with a, with a letter and that type of a surety, but I'm one of many.
If I can add to that real quick, Mr. Chair, too, just, you know, cause I know the board assesses these circumstances on a case-by-case basis. So Mr. Akari owns this building. It's not like he's selling units and is gonna disappear. It's, it's rented. Mr. Akari owns twenty Delke, Carmine Street, which is the building across from the Little League Field. And Mr. Akari operates his own business at twenty Delke Carmine Street, so he's a Wakefield businessman. And he owns the other property next door to this, the two-family house, or his family does at twenty Delke Carmine. So he's very vested in the area. And I think, you know, he will tell you that he's gonna do this in the spring. He's not gonna disappear. He's not going anywhere. So, and we're, we're happy again to give a letter to the board confirming the deficiency, admitting to it. And committing to do, to have it completed by a certain date. And then if it's not, to be responsible for any costs that the board incurs or the town incurs in having to seek enforcement to get it done.
So, Mr. Chair, I'm aligning, agreeing with Chip here, but I, I do wanna. Have that sort of financial commitment by the applicant that Brian's alluding to. There has to be something there besides a letter saying he promises to do it. I know the O and M plan or whatever we have says you gotta. Plant the right stuff and keep it alive and irrigate it and all that. So we do have those teeth already. But there has to be a financial, if this, something does go wrong. And it doesn't get done in time and it drags on and on. And we have to litigate or we have to take matters, then there has to be a financial penalty here. And if that's them incurring a cost, then. And there, there's some teeth there, right? Some additional punitive measure potentially. So, in, in lieu of a surety and a bond, I would say this is okay in my mind.
Okay, I agree, Dave, cause we're not gonna throw the people out of the unit, so we need something, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
We do wanna recognize his status as an upstanding Wakefield property owner and businessman, so.
Yeah, I think to me that goes a long way. He's a neighbor, right? He owns everything and works right there, so I, I feel better. If it was an out-of-town person, I would feel very different. If it was a one-time shot, I would feel very different, but.
Yeah.
I, I think to your point, Tom, we do need to recognize that he's an upstanding businessman in town. And give a little leeway into that sense.
Okay, anybody else? So, do we need to vote here, Brian?
Yeah, I think you do to, to basically, two things are gonna happen. I, I think, Mr. Chair, that you, you would send a letter to the building inspector, you know, saying that the board acknowledges these deficiencies. But, but. Oh, telling him that you're all set for a final CO to issue. And then, but before you did, did that, I would draft a letter for Mr. Akari to sign to the board. That would, you know, A, as I said, admit the deficiencies. B, commit to, to do them. And, and I think the board needs to determine a date. Chip, what do you think is a date that all that will be done by?
June fifteenth.
June fifteenth, okay, so that you have to have a, a date certain. And if they're not, that he recognizes the board's enforcement provisions under the special permit in the O and M plan. And if the board has to enforce, he would indemnify the board and agree that he would be responsible for any attorney's fees. Or costs that will be incurred by the board in enforcing. And it, I've done this with Tom Mullin, it would be imputed value. So it, it wouldn't be like you were hiring a third party. It would be the, it would be the, the, the cost of. Town council, if you will, that his time, that that money will go back to the town. But we're comfortable it's never gonna happen because Anthony's gonna have this done by June fifteenth, so that's why we're happy to do all that.
And Anthony, you use Northeast Nurseries, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So I would go to them now and place this order.
Yeah.
That way, when they're dropping in the spring, they're buying specifically and they know these trees are already sold, that they'll bring them in for you.
No, I'll definitely do that this week. But I have one question, so. There's one tree on the, when you're facing the building on Water Street, to the left, right against the building. And I don't know if I can fit a bigger tree in there. Like, it's the walkway, the building, and there's a holly's there. So it's a single species. I don't know if we can pull the landscape plan up, but.
Yeah.
Do you guys know what I'm talking about? But.
Where is it, Anthony?
It's, it's right on the left corner of the building.
Right here?
No, the other.
Oh, oh, yeah. Right here?
Yeah, it's like, it's right against the, those might be the hollys, but there's one built, one tree right in the corner.
There's three H, oh, hold on. Where is it?
I think it's the single. Is it the, the top one on the trees?
Okay, it's a G I N?
The Ginkgo.
Yeah, I don't think I can fit one there. It's like tight already.
Yeah.
I mean.
Oh, here it is, right here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if you look at it, I mean, that's like one of the bigger ones and it's just, that's gonna be. I, I think it's too big to be there already, but, cause it's gonna grow, right? But I mean, whatever you guys want me to do, I just wanna be, you know, do the right thing. Not just to do it, cause that's what's on the plan, but.
No, we, we wanna do what works too, so.
I mean, all the other ones have plenty of space for the bigger trees, but that one is tight. Cause you got the walkway, you got the building, you got the hollys there. It's a lot of stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I think you could have put a bigger tree in before you did all the other stuff. But I would agree now that that one might be tough to rip up. You'd probably hit the walkway with your excavator digging a hole, so.
Right.
Probably don't wanna do that one. So we can, we can say, void that one, Brian. I'm okay with that. Leave that at the two and a half. It's actually healthy, too. It's one of the more healthy trees.
Okay.
And that brings the number down to seven.
And making, it's the one Ginkgo, yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That might be a tougher one actually to find in a bigger size, too.
Okay, Brian, I think we're good with the site plan.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we, we want a motion that's a two-step motion. That following the letter that we get from the, the applicant and his attorney. Outlining the commitments that they made. You know, you might in that letter mention the Gink, leaving the Ginkgo.
Yeah.
And once we have that and that's in good order, then they would authorize. You know, either myself or Joe as the clerk to send a letter to the building department.
Normally it's the chair. Yeah, normally it'd be you. So, Mr. Chair.
That's probably been done in the past, but this chair may wanna do it differently.
No, I'm fine with that.
You know, he may wanna shun some of the work. But, so I think also in that motion, we need to give you, you, Mr. Chair, the permission to. Read the letter and accept it from, from the applicant. Like, we don't need to see it.
Right. And then, you know, our letter's not to tell Ben what to do, but to say that we're okay with it. Right?
Yep, yep.
God, no, we never tell them that he can do something.
No. So, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that this board authorizes you to work with the applicant. To compose a letter summarizing the landscape deficiency as noted in the evening's hearing. That those deficiencies must be rectified by June fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, the exception of the Ginkgo tree, as noted. And if not, then it would be a financial cost as, as the applicant outlined tonight. And assuming satisfaction, to your satisfaction, that letter is complete. Then I would also authorize you to send a letter to the building inspector or make a motion that we authorize you to send a letter to the building inspector. Recommending the issuance of a certificate, certificate of occupancy. Based on the conditions of the board's special permit being met, notwithstanding those landscaping deficiencies in that letter, which I would attach to that. That's the motion.
Motion's been seconded. Any discussion or questions from the board? Seeing on regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim? Jim? Frozen? Jim's good. Chip?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. Brian, I'll wait to, I'll wait to receive that letter from you.
Yes, I'll prepare both letters, Mr. Chair. If you, if it's okay with you, I'll do a draft letter for you to, to use as you want.
Yeah, sure, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving right along. Clerk and board comments.
Uh, yeah, the only thing I really have, we met the bylaw review committee a few weeks ago and. Mark Brombroski was back on the twentieth, so he was voted back in town council. There was no conflict of interest, so. He'll be not at a next meeting, but the following, the November twentieth, so I don't know, Tom, if he will be invited to that or not, sometimes.
No, I think you can cover, of course. It's just weird that they somehow they invite, sometimes they invite me, sometimes they don't.
Yeah, he may send an invite. You don't have to go if you don't want to be busy.
No, if you, if you, I think you're, you're doing a good job covering it.
Yeah, nice. But that's, that's all I have.
All right, Jim, you got something?
Um, yeah, Greenwood Station. They, we got a set of drawings in to the building department. They finally figured out the site, a civil engineer finally figured out the site is not in Malden, but is in Wakefield. So we made some progress there. But now the architect, Dan Deulius, basically. Wants to have a phone conversation about some comments that I've made, both in the electrical drawings. As far as fixtures that he said he was gonna provide, as well as the ventilation garage. Which is a bunch of openings in which don't exist on the architecture or on the structural drawings. So I don't know what he's gonna tell me.
Maybe that's.
At this point, I'm not approving the.
I'm sorry.
I'm not approving the, I'm not approving the drawings at this point.
Chip, were you gonna say something?
No, I'm all set. The, the drawings are just tough. They've gotta match.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else, board members?
Twenty-seven Water Street all over again.
I'll just remind board members, we have a special, you know, we had added a meeting next week. Don't forget about that.
Thank you very much. I would have totally forgotten about it.
And it's the, the Nahand Street forty B, so.
Has that been posted yet?
It has, it was in today's.
Do we have?
You'll get the link after tonight.
Okay, we don't have it yet. I haven't missed it.
Nope. No, we don't wanna send out too many links. It gets confusing.
Okay, fine. I just, I'm tough enough, so. Thank you for the reminder and thanks for the clarification on when we get stuff.
Just try to, I, I, I just try to be prompt, please.
Hey, I, I have a question on that forty B. If they only have to have twenty-five percent of them affordable, how come we count all of them as affordable towards our count? Is that correct? That we count every one of them?
When it's a rental.
When rental, yeah.
Even only twenty-five percent have to be.
And if it was condos, only that twenty-five percent would count against our lottery. Yeah, I can start inventory.
All right, thanks.
Okay, anything else?
Tom, on that, and maybe we shouldn't even talk about it yet. But have we looked into, will we discuss safe harbors that night?
Yeah, Chip, let's not, let's not get into any of that tonight.
No, I don't wanna get into it, but that will be just, that's the right time to discuss it then.
After we open the hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Up the minutes?
Yep, we're, we're looking to approve the minutes of September twenty-seventh. Any comments from anyone? I think we can take a voice vote on this.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes prepared expertly and accurately by Gail for the September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three hearing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 With that, a motion to adjourn is always in order.
So moved. So moved.
Any objections? Hey, thank you. Let's take it while we can get it. Have a good night, everybody.